Hey, everybody. It looks like it's 6:00 PM. And welcome to the March 10th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission. Will staff please take roll? And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from February 10th? Any questions or issues? And being noted, we will move on to correspondence. Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's no correspondence other than that related to items on the agenda this evening. I would see, I'm looking for Ms. Swetnam on our attendees and panelists list. Matt, can you tell me if Ms. Swetnam is still on?
It does not appear that she is currently connected. Let me check the attendees. I don't see her over there either, so she might have been disconnected briefly.
Can you, can you hear me?
There you are.
I'm showing up as Dawn Meesmer, so I'm not sure what that means. I think you sent me your meeting invite, Mr. Meesmer, so my apologies.
Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. Yes, that's the case. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to introduce Ms. Darcy Swetnam, City Attorney. Ms. Swetnam will be item number one under new business. And so I'll leave it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners and staff, any members of the audience. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you all tonight about the city's land use process and the important role that you all play in that and just give you a little bit of background about the legal framework that's in place to empower you all and provide you some guidance on how you can best serve the city. So I am going to try to share a PowerPoint presentation here that I've put together for you. Are you all able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Great. My 11-year-old son is really good at this stuff, and I'm still playing catch-up, so. So tonight, we thought we would talk about land use and policy for the Planning Commission. And the roadmap for tonight's discussion is to go through the empowering statutes that create planning commissions in Washington State and then talk about some of their requirements and restrictions. Before I get into that, I just wanted to mention that Mr. Meesmer and I chatted a little bit about tonight's discussion briefly earlier today. And, you know, my thoughts here tonight are more of a general overview. I know that you all have done your training, the OPMA training and roles and responsibility training when you took office. So I apologize if some of this is repetitive. But I know that Mr. Meesmer mentioned that he's going to be coming back to you all with a work plan for some of the issues that you're going to be tackling in 2021. So please feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have questions, and we'll get started. So Planning Commissions in Washington State for Code Cities are established by Chapter 35A 63 of the Revised Code of Washington. What this does is it allows Code Cities to establish a planning commission if they choose to. And it provides for some procedural safeguards and allows the cities to determine the power of those planning commissions. So in essence, a city's legislative body is empowered by 35A 63 to assign certain tasks to a planning commission if it chooses to do that. Typically, planning commissions serve in two roles. The first is legislative action, and that is as an advisory board to the city council. Planning commissioners help prepare and revise comprehensive plans and local land use regulations. Planning commissioners then forward a recommendation to the city council for consideration and ultimate adoption. Planning commissioners also get involved in quasi-judicial actions where there are independent development, I'm sorry, individual development proposals. And really, the scope of what that involvement looks like is left up to local agencies. In this case, the Anacortes Municipal Code provides those assignments. So the Anacortes Municipal Code does establish the planning commission, which is good since you're all here, and that is found in Chapter 242. That just creates the basic framework for the planning commission by establishing the commission itself, clarifying that there are seven members who are appointed by the mayor with the consent of the council. You all serve six-year term. You carry out the duties that are assigned to you by the Unified Development Code. And it provides things like electing a chair, adopting procedures, identifies quorum and public records requirements. So the meat of your work is laid out in Title 19, which is the city's Uniform Development Code. Some of you may have been around long enough to have played a role in the formation of the Uniform Development Code over the past couple of years. But it establishes a few buckets of work for the planning commission in the Anacortes. The first is legislative actions. So you're all assigned a role in the adoption of or amendments to the city's comprehensive plan. You are assigned a role in the adoption of or amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. And you are assigned a role in the implementation of development regulations following that comprehensive plan and land use map. For quasi-judicial actions, there's a more limited scope for planning commissioners. And this was a change that came about in the re-composition of the Uniform Development Code. It used to be that the planning commission was more involved in a wider variety of quasi-judicial actions. But in the rewrite of the UDC, the types of quasi-judicial actions that go to the planning commission are those Type III hearing examiner decisions that are laid out in the matrix in the code. And that includes shoreline conditional use and variance permits, shoreline substantial development permits for projects under $1 million on less than three acres, and special and conditional use and reasonable use permits pursuant to Chapter 1770 of the Municipal Code. So that's the framework for what you do. So the requirements and restrictions, and some of this might be repetitive for some of you. But the first one is GMA. GMA is the Growth Management Act, and it can be found at 3670A of the Revised Code of Washington. And it requires Anacortes and other jurisdictions in the state, including counties and cities, to develop a comprehensive plan to manage growth. The plan has got to address 13 goals that are laid out in the GMA statutes. There are, for the comprehensive plan, mandatory and optional elements to the plan requirements. And a lot of you are probably aware and may have actually been involved in the significant Page 1 rewrite of the comprehensive plan that the city spent, I think it was a couple of years, going through back in, I think it was 2016 that it was finalized. So Planning Commission played a really significant role in that work. And so that's one of the central goals and roles of any planning commission. The city also, under GMA, has to address critical areas and natural resource lands. I know you all are in the middle of working on a critical areas ordinance update, so that's related to GMA. The city's got to also plan for urban growth areas. And GMA also creates the Growth Management Hearing Board, which is a judicative appeal board for comp plan or development regulation disputes. So the other, another kind of scheme that overlays your work is OPMA, which is the Open Public Meetings Act, and that can be found at 4230 of the Revised Code of Washington. This applies to you as well as the city council and a lot of the boards and commissions of the city. And it requires that meetings of governing bodies of agencies be open to the public. And those requirements are triggered anytime there is a quorum of a governing body, which includes Planning Commission, gathering to discuss city business. So one of the classic kind of caveats about OPMA issues are serial meetings, where one city council member talks with one other city council member. Not a triggering event for the OPMA. But then if they continue to talk to other individual city council members in a series of communications about one issue, then that would be, that would be an OPMA violation. There's a lot of, there are a lot of different types of requirements under OPMA for regular versus special meetings. But essentially, at the heart of it, the public has to be given at least 24 hours' notice of a meeting and provided an opportunity to attend. These statutes have flexed and been very interesting under the COVID pandemic with so many municipalities closing down their council chambers. You know, there was a suspension of OPMA requirements, certain OPMA requirements in light of the COVID pandemic. But we're learning new ways to be able to allow the public to participate. So there are also requirements for minutes and record keeping. You have staff who do a good job of helping support you in that. One thing I wanted to mention is that violation of the OPMA rules, it can nullify, it does nullify any action taken in a meeting that violates the OPMA. And it can include personal criminal liability for individual board members who knowingly violate OPMA, which I'm sure is not something that we need to worry about in Anacortes. There are some limited exceptions for executive sessions, which are meetings that don't have to include the public. Some of the big ones that come up from time to time are if the city attorney is present with the board to discuss potential litigation or current litigation, if there are real estate transactions that meet certain criteria and certain personnel issues. So those must fit within those narrow exceptions. But otherwise, meetings have to be open to the public. Similarly, the Public Records Act, which is at 4256 RCW, requires all records of state and local agencies to be available to the public. There are narrowly construed exceptions, which are specifically enumerated in various, in the Public Records Act, but also other areas of the Revised Code of Washington. So the essence of the Public Records Act are that, is that we have to make everything we do available to the public unless that record fits within one of the specific exceptions. And records have to be kept for different lengths of time based on their retention value. We have some transitory records that can be disposed of once whatever they're about is resolved. We have other records that have to be kept for, you know, in some cases, hundreds of years. So there is a retention schedule that the state has that dictates how long we have to keep certain records, and it's like 130-some pages long. So these statutes are sometimes challenging for local agencies to navigate. So Chapter 4014 of the RCW establishes the retention schedule for records. And destruction or disposition of records prior to their retention schedule triggers criminal penalties. So we're very careful about keeping everything that we do. And that includes the Planning Commission records. So all of your records are subject to Public Records Act protections, and they have to be producible if requested. These questions related to this idea come up with the city council frequently. There's recent case law in Washington that says that if an individual member of a board is transacting business on behalf of the agency using personal emails or accounts and a records request comes in for those records, then, you know, the personal email account of that individual becomes subject to Public Records Act disclosure. So we always try to encourage, you know, members acting on behalf of the city to keep a good separation between personal accounts. So the last kind of guiding principle, which probably comes up for you more than Public Records Act issues, is the appearance of fairness doctrine. And I know you guys have all gone through training on this as well. But that's at RCW 4236. And it's a rule of law that requires decision makers to conduct non-court hearings and proceedings, so quasi-judicial matters, in a way that is fair and unbiased, both in appearance and in fact. So again, this applies to your quasi-judicial decisions, so not your legislative decisions. But it requires that proceedings be procedurally fair. And it requires that there is an appearance that the proceeding is being conducted by impartial decision makers. So I can tell you that there's been a lot of thought that's gone into both state procedural requirements and local procedures at the city that take these, you know, this requirement for fair proceedings into account. So I think your processes for dealing with quasi-judicial matters are very fair. So again, this doesn't apply to legislative issues. But there is a lot of focus on making sure that individual decision makers are able to hear a matter. And they can be disqualified if they have prejudged the issue. So this is one of the reasons why we encourage Planning Commissioners and city council members not to weigh in on any project that could potentially come before the body because it could create the appearance that they've prejudged an issue. You also are disqualified if there is a bias in favor of one side in the proceeding, if there is a conflict of interest, and if there is some other reason why an individual decision maker cannot be impartial, then they should be disqualified. The other kind of point to bring up here is that there is a clear prohibition against ex parte communication with either party to a potential issue. And ex parte communication is any communication outside the proceedings. And there's really interesting case law on this one. This can be extended to, you know, ex parte communication could be doing individual research on a potential quasi-judicial matter that's outside of the record. You know, so if a land use issue comes before, you know, a planning commissioner, and you decide you want to go out and do your own site visit or do some research on the project, that could raise an appearance of fairness doctrine issue. When we have quasi-judicial hearings, there's an opportunity at the beginning of that hearing for any commissioner to disclose any ex parte communication or any potential appearance of a bias. And they either can excuse themselves or ask if any of the parties would ask them to excuse themselves. So that's fairly standard process. So I'm talking a lot, and it's late. So I think that's all that I have to share, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. And I want to mention, too, that as the city attorney, my office is a resource for all of you. So if you ever have questions that come up related to any of these or any other issues, I am happy to and have frequently met with Planning Commissioners to talk about questions or issues as they arise. So I'm available for questions if you have any. Mr. McKenzie, I think you're muted.
Right again. There was a question that came up at the last meeting. Several commissioners weighed in about the extent to which Planning Commissioners have the opportunity to perhaps do more than is currently listed in Chapter 19 for specific assigned duties. I wonder if you could share your analysis of what is available within the current law that can or could be done to increase the scope of the commission's work?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And of course, you're all here because you care about the community and you want to volunteer your time. So I certainly understand an interest in wanting to be more involved in what the city does. Generally, the way that Planning Commissioners, you know, roles are created is they're assigned by the elected body. So the city council member in adopting the Uniform Development Code said, here's what we want to assign the Planning Commissioners to do. So I would be a little bit concerned about Planning Commissioners in an official capacity participating in or weighing in on other types of projects that are not enumerated here because I think that has the potential of creating an appearance of fairness doctrine issue. That being said, you all are Planning Commissioners, but you're also members of the public and the community. So you have the opportunity to, if you want to voice an opinion about a project that doesn't come before you, to participate in any public discussion of that. If you would like to see your role increased or changed, that would be an issue that would need to be addressed through an ordinance and gone to city council. So you could certainly recommend that the Planning Commission, you know, that some of the issues in the table that fall in different types of decisions, i.e. not Type III hearing examiner decisions, be moved into that category. But that would be a recommendation made to council that would ultimately have to be adopted by council in an ordinance.
So, yes, go ahead.
No, I'll go ahead and finish your point. I just wanted to mention that I do have a comment.
So my take on the discussion that the Planning Commission members had is not necessarily taking on more specific duties within Title 19, but what are the other scopes of work that are legally permissible for Planning Commissions? Now, I read the law, and I'm certainly no attorney. But there is a passage in there that specifically talks about the ability for the city council to assign additional duties to the Planning Commission, such as fact-finding, surveying, or reviewing planning issues outside of the normal permitting process. Do you speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's a great point. And that's certainly something that is available if council decides that they want, that they want the Planning Commission to do some fact-finding or dig into a particular issue. That's certainly available. To be, you know, to be impactful on the outcome, that would need to be assigned by council. And that's certainly something that could happen. I mean, I think that oftentimes, the Planning Commissioner, the Planning Commission has the ability to delve into some of these more complicated issues in a lot more depth and with a lot more thoroughness than a busy city council does. So certainly, that's something that you can make a recommendation to council on, and they would have to take action to make that assignment.
Thank you, Mr. Graff.
Yeah, thanks, Ward. And I think you hit the nail on the head. I think, you know, the comment that I made last time was more on the, let's do more of the legislative side of the House than the quasi-judicial. I think we understand there's a balance there, and we each have a bucket we have to hold. But, you know, in the guise of the comprehensive plan, some of this plan being kind of a strategic outlook kind of in the future kind of aspects to some of the things that are coming towards the city today and tomorrow, like, you know, things that impact the comprehensive plan would be urban growth in the commercial district or what is the impacts with the traffic circle in front of Safeway, you know, and all of those kinds of things. And I think a lot of us on the commission have an interest in wanting to take more of an active role in providing the advisory and the fact-finding for the city council than doing just the quasi-judicial stuff, which of late, I think because of COVID, is what we've been more or less focused on. And I think we can find opportunities based on what the city attorney just said to delve into or make the recommendation to the city council and to the mayor to say, hey, use the Planning Commission more because we're dying to do some more work in those specific areas.
Thank you. Let me check in with the other commissioners. Is there a sense for, or any interest in this, in pursuing this with the council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Graff.
The answer is yes, on my part. But I wanted to step back a bit and ask a question of Ms. Swetnam. By the way, Darcy, you gave a great presentation, much better than the training programs I'm going to. So thank you for that. Who takes the long view? What group, what function, what organization within the city takes the long view 10 to 20 years from now? Where does Anacortes want to be? And that, whether you call it strategic planning or long-range planning, provides a framework with much of the stuff, like the SMP, the CAO, et cetera, could go under. And I was wondering, what group does that aspect of it? Because if it's done well, then that could provide a good framework from which the Planning Commission could work under. So I'm just opening up to see who's involved in that.
I think that's a really good question. And I would say that the Planning Commission is largely tasked with that. I mean, it's a partnership with the city council. But what we saw in the last comprehensive plan update was that the engagement with the public and the consideration of each of the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan was handled at the Planning Commission level, the big part of the work there. So I think the city council, as the legislative body of the city, you know, they've got to formally adopt those plans. But really, I think the recognition is there that the Planning Commission is in a better position to be able to do the deep dive that's required for that kind of strategic planning. So I would say it's a partnership. But there is a reason why GMA specifically allows agencies to use Planning Commissions to do that work, so.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to say that Ms. Swetnam has done a fantastic presentation for us and very much so identified the issues the Planning Commission deals with. One thing I'd like to mention, and I think Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Graff, you were both on the commission during the comprehensive plan update process. It was pretty close to a three-year process, over 80 public meetings, workshops. And then, you know, that's your long-range plan. That's your 10-year outreach plan there. And in a couple of years, we're going to be starting on, you know, updating the comprehensive plan again. Now, we're working on the Shoreline Master Program. And the Planning Commission has always acted as a fact-finding. And once they've, you know, done all their fact-finding, then they make their recommendations to the city council based on these legislative activities. Now, when I say fact-finding, that also includes your quasi-judicial actions you deal with. So just as an example of some of the things that are coming up for us this spring and this summer, we have, of course, the Shoreline Master Program. We will need to get a recommendation to the city council soon as possible. Then we have our work to do on the tree preservation ordinance. And once I get the work plan put together, I'll let you know what our thoughts are for timing. We also have our flood management program that will need updated based on new FEMA guidance that will be coming before you. We currently have the month of March open for proposals for comprehensive plan amendments and development regulation amendments. And there, we know of three that were held over from last year that we'll need to deal with upcoming. And there are some points that the Planning Commission has brought up over the past year that staff feel we may want to look at proposing to the council and Planning Commission for development regulation changes. So we're going to be pretty busy. One of the ideas that council has discussed with me from our planning committee was that when we get into, for instance, things like the tree preservation ordinance, having the planning committee or the Planning Commission take a look at some of the other jurisdictions' tree preservation ordinance and making recommendations during the public meeting is certainly within your purview, you know, doing some research, things like that. So I hope that's helpful. And I'm hoping that we can have our work plan ready to come back to the Planning Commission on the next upcoming.
Any other commissioners with input or ideas here? Mr. Ritter?
I just want to say that I don't know, I wasn't part of the comprehensive planning process, so I don't have that background. But I do feel like with transportation, like when I worked with it, it's a big part of the comprehensive planning and doing that broad overview. So I think that the commissioners are just wanting to be able to, since we're kind of, like you were talking about earlier, the long range, we need to fit all those big pieces together. So just making sure that how the transportation fits into all the land use is part of that. And maybe that was already done as part of the long-range planning and the comprehensive plan, but I do think it's important. And maybe that was already done as part of the long-range planning and the comprehensive plan, but I do, I do think it's important.
Others? Anyone else? Ms. Martin?
I would like to say I'm happy to hear that, uh, Mr. Miesmer has got work for us to do. I, I agree with my colleagues. We're ready to do some work.
Thank you. Harry, hold on.
Yeah, just, uh, one question. Is there, um, is there a potential for a letter or a work session going forward to, uh, the president, the council and the mayor uh, to get their input on this process, to see what they think, uh, needs to be, uh, either an expanded role in terms, especially in study processes, uh, development regulatory processes that are under review, whether it's inside the comp plan or inside the zoning ordinance, whatever it happens to be, uh, to see if, if they really, if they're wanting us to take that role. That's the question I have. Is they have their very defined role and it's very extensive. We have ours. And I, but I agree with members of the commission, what they're saying in terms of that. It seems like we should be involved in this very long-term, you know, if we're going to be developing traffic circles. I know last time my question was very, very specific about criteria. How, how does the city come about criteria to determine one where a location should be and the type of traffic circle or traffic improvement should be done, uh, in those areas? And does that find its way then into our, our other code work that we do in terms of code meaning of the comprehensive plan work where we have better definition of those, uh, those elements? Uh, anyway, just a general question about roles and responsibilities and where the council thinks we really do fit. Uh, in my other experience, there's been much more of a dialogue. Uh, it's a three-part dialogue between staff, council and, uh, and commission.
And if the commissioners would indulge me for a minute, I want to speak from the perspective of, as whoever is the person in chairing the meeting. Um, I know from a lot of experience being in meetings, I hate to see people's time get wasted. So, um, if I, if I rushed through some of this stuff and aren't allowing enough time for discussion, I would hope to hear feedback. My general approach is if it's something that's of a, of a a specific task in nature where we've got, we're doing an analysis, coming to a decision, I try, as a chair, I try to facilitate that to be done as quickly and efficiently as possible. I always try to remember towards the end of the meeting, ask if there are any other comments because I, I would hope that if people had things that are on their mind, they would feel free to bring those up. And this is by way of leading into a, maybe a further discussion at some point. Um, I, I like the idea of, uh, a discussion with the council. What could we do that would meet their requirements, that would meet their needs more effectively? And what do we think we could do that they may not know we could do? And that we could invite their, uh, assignment. In other words, uh, we may, we may be aware of issues because of our role and our, our work about, um, the comprehensive plan and something that, let's make sure this thing gets on the agenda when we start doing amendments because it keeps coming up. Or, uh, we're hearing, uh, if we're hearing a lot of comments from the public about a particular area, let's make sure that we get to that and discuss it, not, not miss the, the chance to use that input. So it's a long way around of saying, I'm certainly, um, glad to get feedback and to make any changes about how we facilitate our meetings, that would be more helpful. But I think that getting the work done that we have ahead of us and allowing time at the end of the meeting to come up with new ideas or new, new ways of thinking about things is, uh, perfectly within our, within our wheelhouse.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, one, one additional thought, um, you know, if, if what you're talking about is policy decisions or recommended amendments to the development codes, which I think is what I heard, you're talking about transportation, um, you know, maybe some specific criteria that may not be in the code that, that you think, you think should be. That's certainly in your wheelhouse and, and you're empowered to do that work and then make a recommendation to city council. If what you're seeking is, um, more of a specific, uh, task, you could certainly as a body, um, s- send some kind of a letter to city council recommending that they, um, you know, task you with whatever it is that you'd like to work on. Um, and, and, you know, council can consider that. There's a, there is a planning committee and that's sometimes a, a good way to get a sense from the council without having to go to the full council um, about, about what they, what they'd like to do. Um, and so, you know, staff would be happy to, to take that through, but you could send a letter to the mayor um, and ask that she docked an issue for council meeting too. And that's always an option that's available. Uh, the staff is happy to facilitate discussions between you as planning commissioners and the city council. Um, you know, keeping in mind that we have those OPMA requirements. And so if what you're looking for is a joint meeting between the two agencies, um, that, you know, the, those are, those will have to be dealt with in some formality. So.
Or, one, one last thing, Ward?
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, uh, one thing I want, want us to be very careful of, and this goes to Don's shop. And that is, much of our work is either consultant-dependent or staff-dependent or both. Uh, not only our own workloads, but, uh, uh, the technical capabilities that the city has, which are quite formidable. Uh, and so whatever the next steps are, we need to better understand, uh, what that linkage is and, and how dependent we are upon, uh, beyond those resources. Resource allocation here is going to be a major, major question.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Miesmer.
Uh, thank you. Um, and, and thank you, Mr. Melino. Yes, resources are, are at a prime right at the moment. Um, so anyway, I think that it's entirely possible for us to have, for the commission and staff to have a workshop to further, you know, discuss ideas that you may have for development regulation, uh, proposals, uh, amendments or comprehensive. We could certainly, uh, you know, arrange that, have an evening where we just discuss those. And then, you know, from a staff perspective, let you know which ones, you know, we think might should move forward or not, or how, how that process even works. The other is, if, if you want to put together, uh, a letter, I can certainly invite, um, the chair to our planning committee meeting and we can introduce that and get some feedback from the planning committee, which is, uh, three members of the city council. So, um, if, uh, you know, the, as an example, if, if the planning commission wants to get together at the next meeting and have a kind of a roundtable discussion about what you would like to present to the planning committee and then, uh, Mr. McKenzie, presents that to the planning committee, we can have that conversation.
Any thoughts on that?
I'd be curious to know what their, uh, work program is for the next year, the planning committee?
Um, well, so the, the, the planning committee is a subcommittee of the city council. So we have three members of the council on that. And, you know, essentially, we have an agenda usually and we discuss various things that might be coming before the planning commission or city council. So we, we, they don't really have a work plan, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Uh, on the other hand, I'll be putting one together for the planning commission within the next couple of weeks and bringing them together for you.
Uh, Mr. Miesmer, I think my own personal preference would be that there not be just the chair at that meeting. That perhaps a couple of people who are passionate about this issue also could sit in if that were possible.
I think as long as we don't have a quorum, that would be okay.
I was thinking about three total.
Sounds good.
Ever.
Is it possible, it, I'm sorry. Is it possible to have the planning committee, uh, give us a presentation on their vision for the city over the next 10 to 15, 20 years? What they are working, the framework with which they're working under? Is it possible to get a pitch on that? Or at least what's been done in the past?
Can I weigh in on that, Mr. Miesmer?
Yes.
I would recommend against that, um, because the planning committee is a subcommittee of the council and so the, the, one, the membership changes, but two, um, they're not really empowered to speak on behalf of the council as a whole. Um, I've not seen a situation where we have the city council make presentations to the planning commission about, um, about, you know, planning goals, because I think they've articulated those goals in the comprehensive plan. Um, so, so I would maybe recommend starting with a request to the planning committee. Um, but I, I, I think that could get us into some hot water if we tried to get the planning committee members to speak on behalf of council to the planning commission.
So the, so I take it then that the, the comprehensive plan, I wasn't involved in that, so I apologize. So that articulates what our growth objectives are, what we want the city to look like, the mix, the demographics, the economic impact, to, uh, uh, taking a look at ramifications of certain outside forces that have us look at issues that may affect us. So is it, is it a strategic plan?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, it, I'll answer that. Yes, strategic plan. In so much as the 2016 comprehensive plan, again, that was a massive overhaul. And the entire community was involved. It lays out what's expected over the planning period, 10 years, for housing, affordable housing. It has a transportation element, economic development element. You know, it, I mean, it, it covers the entire spectrum required by the Growth Management Act. So if you take a look at that, at a comprehensive plan, you'll, you, you can start off and you can look at the housing element and it will tell you how many housing units that we are expected over this actual planning period. And it will tell you that there are 2.5 individuals per home is how we calculated how many housing units we would actually need. Um, it also, uh, will tell you, for instance, the policies associated with how the development regulations were put together, such as for density, design standards and things like that. So that is our long-range planning document, right there. We have some other documents that are, for instance, uh, maritime strategic plan. We have an affordable housing strategic plan that was developed. And we have a lodging tax strategic plan that has been developed as well. All available on, on the website. Um, so within the comprehensive plan, there are many documents that were used to finalize the comprehensive plan, including the transportation element of that. And I'm, I think it was TSI was the consultant that worked with us on that, but I could be wrong. But in that, it takes into consideration growth throughout the city area and what's needed. And then through that, there's the, uh, transportation comp plan along with the capital facilities plan that discusses various growth patterns and where we might need some changes in intersections based on trips. We also, and, and I think I may have, excuse me, I may have brought this up before, but when a project comes in, uh, that you may be seeing, you may see in that project application, a traffic impact analysis. We also now have a model that we send out, um, various projects to a consultant and they run it through the model to see what those impacts are on trips at various intersections and, and various, uh, portions of roadway. So I guess the short answer is yes, the comprehensive plan is our guiding document throughout that 10-year planning period.
Can I ask one other question? Or, or Linda, go ahead.
Let me go back to Mr. Graff because he had a, started saying something and got cut off.
Well, I was going to ask about the planning committee, but that already got cleared up. But you know what Mr. Miesmer just said is kind of interesting to me and it's, it's the comprehensive plan and the role that the planning commission had in the comprehensive plan and how, you know, if that's a, if that's a guiding document for the future of Anacortes, you know, you would expect that the planning commission would have some role in anything that may impact that comprehensive plan, i.e., you know, a traffic circle or affordable housing or, you know, apartment height or h- hotel or, you know, things like that. And again, you know, I'm just trying to throw more fuel on the, hey, you know, we'd like to be a part of that as a planning commission. If it's, you know, within the, uh, purview, if, if, if the city council would accept us and our help. And I'll, I'll stop talking.
Uh, back to Mr. Cartwright, you've.
No, I yield to Linda. Linda had a, had a point.
Okay.
I have, I have a question and a comment. Um, I guess what I'm thinking is that that comprehensive plan, even though many of us might not have been, uh, participants in that at the time, uh, at, at least I, I believe that we are charged with being the, um, protectors or the, um, um, overseers possibly of that document. So my question, is that true?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Wetman.
Thanks. Uh, Linda, that's really well put. Um, the, 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 the whole purpose of the Growth Management Act was to require communities to plan for growth and they gave them this tool, this comprehensive plan tool to do just that. So the structure, kind of a way to think about it is the comprehensive plan is the opportunity for everybody in the community to come together, talk about their vision for the city, look at how are we going to accommodate these numbers of people that we anticipate over the next decade? Um, and, and then adopt that as a plan. There are sub-plans that fall underneath that, which Mr. Miesmer talked about, Shoreline's management plan, et cetera, et cetera. And those long-term planning documents then guide what our development regulations are. So when, when we did the rewrite of the Unified Development Code, um, the, the, the components of that code that then became regulations that, you know, govern individual land use issues were informed by the comprehensive plan. So, so, you know, you're right that, that you are the, you are the keepers of the comprehensive plan. Um, but once we adopt the, you know, the goals and the policies in that comprehensive plan as development regulations, then those development regulations kind of stand on their own and we have to, you know, we have to make sure we're following the, the legal requirements to, you know, to avoid takings, takings issues and those kinds of things. Um, but, but certainly, you know, as, as you see, I mean, the comp plan was adopted back in 2016 and there are already conversations about what the future of the community should look like that may be different than there were in 2016. So that would be when you would go back to the top of the list, um, make a legislative update to that comprehensive plan, which would then get, you know, kind of pushed down to whether there were any development regulations that needed to be amended to accommodate those changes, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And Ms. Rutherford, you had a comment?
Yeah, kind of in the spirit, in the spirit of the discussion, um, this is just a request to, to Don, um, Mr. Miesmer. Um, do you think we could all get a copy of the comp plan? I mean, I remember when I worked as a planner, I had a copy of the Woodinville comp plan on my desk. Cause if we're shepherds of this plan, um, it might be nice, you know, it's, it's kind of our guiding document. Um, you know, I remember when I did the transportation section in the Woodinville one, you know, we had a, we had a CIP list with goals and, you know, it, I, I'm, you know, maybe I'm, I'm admitting that I haven't done as much research as I should have, but, um, it'd be nice to have that as a reference. So when I, when we're going through things as planning commissioners, we can be informed because, you know, like Don said, there were 80 meetings to come up with this. So it is kind of this very important document to guide, um, decisions. And, and, and I, you know, with, with transportation, um, those goals, like, kind of like you said, there are intersections that you know are going to be problem ones because they've done these transportation models. So I'm curious, like, what kind of visioning was done at that time too? I mean, I'm sure it's, maybe it's different now, or maybe like you said, that it's evolved, but it would be a good thing to kind of have for all of us. Just a suggestion.
So at this point, I have, I have a couple of comments and one suggestion then. The package of material that I received when I first, uh, was appointed to the planning commission had a copy of the comprehensive plan in it. So some people may have it, some may not. had a copy of the comprehensive plan in it, so some people may have it, some may not.
Oh, really? Okay.
And secondly, having done a lot of strategic planning with organizations, nonprofits, and government, they usually last until the day the reality strikes, which is about the day after the plan gets signed. So I think there are many opportunities for us to look at where there are inconsistencies, or changes, or freight trains coming down the track that we didn't know about at the time the original plan was done, that could be very useful topics for future amendments, or even just discussions. So my suggestion would be that, that maybe we all go back and make sure we've seen the comprehensive plan and be thinking about what kinds of things would we like to share with the, with the council about what the Planning Commission could and is interested in doing, and put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Ms. Martin.
So, given the fact that Mr. Meesner said that he's about to put together in the next two weeks or so, a year-long plan for the commission, I am making the suggestion that maybe we should hold off on having a joint meeting with the Planning Committee until we see what that work plan might look like.
Others? Anybody else have thoughts about that? Can we get a show of hands of who knows that they have a copy of the comprehensive plan? Dawn, perhaps we could check in with the others and make sure they've got one?
Mr. Chair, I will make sure that we send out an email tomorrow, and we can add links to the digital copy of our developer regulations and the comprehensive plan. And if anybody wants a hard copy, just let me know through that email, and we'll make it happen.
So the suggestion is to table this for a couple of weeks, or until the, until after we get the work plan back, and then rebook this on the agenda. Does that work? Okay?
I second that motion.
All right. Any more new business? If not, let's move on to old business, the Shoreline Master Program periodic update discussion. Do the staff have some materials for us?
Good evening, everyone.
You're on.
My phone rang. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk about the Shoreline Master Program periodic update, and I'm going to try to get my slideshow up on the screen. So please bear with me for, for just a moment while I try to remember how to do that. Matt, you might have to assist me.
Okay, I'll log into your.
Sorry.
Well, it looks like you got it up.
Start it. And then. Whoop.
So hit screen. Go back to that screen share.
Got it.
All right, and then on the bottom right, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. It's been a little while. All right. I'm not able to, oh, there we go. Okay, I'm so sorry. Okay, so Anacortes Shoreline Master Program periodic update. So our plan for this evening was to talk a little bit about, really, really briefly, the background for the project and the project status, just to kind of help inform folks that might be joining us for the first time, just to give them a little background. And then we'd like to talk about the, the public comments that we've received, kind of bring the Planning Commission into the loop on the public comments, and review some of the preliminary responses that staff and the Watershed Company have put together to respond to those comments. And then we'll talk about next steps in the SMP update process. So please feel free to stop me at any time if you've got any questions or would like to discuss something. So by way of background, as we all know, the city is conducting a periodic update to the Shoreline Master Program. And that's required by the Shoreline Management Act to occur periodically every eight years. The focus of the update is limited to looking at compliance with updates to applicable laws and guidelines, consistency with comprehensive plan and development regulations, and also addressing local circumstances, new information, or improved data. So you may recall there was a gap analysis that was produced that went through and identified mandatory and optional changes, and also included proposed, the proposed amendments, along with the rationale for those proposed amendments. The city is using the optional joint review process that's provided through WAC 17326104. And that process does result in some efficiencies in the overall procedures of the SMP update. And that also requires really close coordination between the city and the Department of Ecology as we're going through all of these steps. So we've been in contact with DOE, you know, pretty, pretty frequently to talk about the different issues that have come up. The process to date, this is what it's looked like. There's been two public open houses and other public outreach. The Planning Commission has held three public work sessions. The proposed amendments were released for public comment last year. And there was a, the city issued a CIPA determination of non-significance for the proposed amendments. The Planning Commission held a public hearing jointly with the Department of Ecology on December 9th, 2020. And finally, the last thing that happened was that public comment period ended on December 18th, 2020. So since, since the close of the public comment period, city staff and the Watershed Company staff have been reviewing those public comments, kind of consolidating them, summarizing them, and, and reviewing those and drafting responses to the comments. The comment summary with responses was sent out to the planning commissioners updated with responses yesterday. So you should all have that. And the document is also in the Planning Commission packet for tonight's evening, or tonight's meeting. So what we'll end up doing with these public comments, it is part of the overall requirements for the SMP periodic update to provide the summary and responses to the public comments, including identifying changes that are proposed to the amendments and resulting from the comments. And we'll end up providing the public comment documentation to the Department of Ecology when the city submits the SMP package for an initial determination of concurrence from, from DOE. So we would like to thank everyone who did take the time to provide comments on the Shoreline Master Program proposed amendments. Thank you for participating, and, you know, know that your comments are going to help in improving the document overall. This is just some stats on some of the pub, on the public comments that were received. We got, we received 39 individual written letters or written public comments from members of the public. There were nine individuals that provided testimony at your public hearing on, on December 9th. And we also received three written comments from local and state agencies. So while you may have had a chance to take a look through the matrices that were sent out, and while there were quite a few individual comments, a lot of them sort of were focused on the same topics. There were really some recurring topics that rose to, to the top. And so my next slides are going to kind of walk through those four primary topics that we kept seeing reoccur in the public comments. So yeah, four overarching topics, common, comment topics. The first was comments received about a request to allow multifamily townhouse residential uses in the urban maritime shoreline environment designation. There were also quite a few comments on the cannerys area, the area that we're calling the cannerys, a proposal to change that shoreline environment designation. Quite a few comments about the Gueimas Channel Trail, and also quite a few comments about compliance and, and monitoring. So this slide is regarding the first comment topic area, residential use in the urban maritime shoreline environment designation. So currently, residential use is prohibited within the urban maritime designation. And one of the public comment letters requested to add townhouses and multifamily as part of a mixed-use development as a conditional use in the urban maritime shoreline environment designation. And there were also, we also received multiple comments that were opposed to said proposal. This map is showing the area of the urban maritime shoreline environment designation. It stretches across a lot of the port facilities over towards Anchor Cove Marina and the Gueimas Island Ferry here. So in reviewing this request, staff, city staff and the Watershed Company staff took a look at the purpose and the designation criteria for the urban maritime environment designation. And I've got that on the screen here. So the purpose is to preserve a variety of water-dependent, water-oriented, and water-related public, commercial, and industrial uses, such as those associated with the port of Anacortes. And then the designation criteria is the urban maritime designation is appropriate for high-intensity urban uses that are currently zoned manufacturing and shipping. And so based on those criteria, the city response is that residential use would be inconsistent with the urban maritime shoreline environment designation criteria, and also potentially incompatible with surrounding high-intensity uses. And so for this particular comment, the, the proposal at this time is not to make any changes in response to that comment. And I'll pause here if there's any questions or discussions on this particular item. Okay. The next kind of topic that came up quite frequently in the comments is the cannery area shoreline environment designation. And that area is located along the Gueimas Channel, sort of along the shoreline of the Old Town zoning designation and partially the R2 zone area, excuse me, east of D Avenue and west of, or excuse me, east of B Avenue and west of about each avenue. So you can see that this particular area has a dual shoreline designation, or parallel shoreline designations of urban along the area from the bottom toe of the slope to the ordinary high watermark. And then the upper portion is shoreline residential. So within the public comments that were submitted, there were, there was a request to change the shoreline environment designation of this urban, this area that's currently designated as urban, to shoreline residential in order to reconcile the inconsistency between the urban shoreline environment and the underlying zoning designations for these properties, which is, as I mentioned, Old Town Zone and R2A, which are both residential zones.
Question. It's Gary. Does the high-water mark accommodate the projections for increased climate change impacts on water coming into the shore?
I'm not sure if I understand your question. The, the ordinary high watermark does, could move over time in response to rising sea levels, which in change, does change the shoreline jurisdiction. So shoreline jurisdiction moves along with that ordinary high watermark.
But does it accommodate the projection of that increasing sea level?
No.
Does this map reflect that?
It does not. No.
It's not. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Libby? I had, didn't we have in a previous presentation a planned rezoning of urban to shoreline residential? Or was my confused? I thought there was an area that we were changing.
Yes, that, this particular area was discussed at your last presentation, or excuse me, at your last meeting as a potential option to consider. At this point, staff is, is recommending that the change occur. There, there are also some other areas, for instance, by San Juan Passage and Edwards Way, where there was a, a change from urban to residential, or proposed change from urban to residential. It's in a different area.
What, what would be the strategic rationale for those changes?
So I, I can get, get into that in just a minute here.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So this is just for this particular area, which is the area that we received the most comments about. Providing some maps here to give you a little bit more context of what's going on within the, this particular area. The zoning designation, so the, we're looking at this narrow band of land, just landward of the ordinary high watermark. So light manufacturing is the designation waterward. And then, as I mentioned already, Old Town and R2A residential immediately abutting. And then there is also the Anacortes Harbor area, located just offshore, and that consists of state-owned aquatic lands that are managed by the Department of Natural Resources. And the DNR leases state-owned aquatic lands, which include portions of these two piers, and of course, portions of these structures over here. But this is the particular area we're talking about. So DNR does manage the aquatic lands and leases portions of these piers to the individuals that are using those right now. And then this is just a picture that shows what it looks like down, down below. So that picture, I don't think you can, I'll use my pointer here if I can. That picture is taken right about in this. That picture is taken uh right about in this location. Can you see my red pointer? Okay. I can't get rid of it. Sorry, I'm just trying to get rid of this laser pointer here. There we go. So the city staffs and the consultants' response to the public comments um is that although the site is adjacent to the aquatic, or excuse me, to the harbor area and the aquatic designation, the uh narrow parcels do not have reasonable commercial navigational accessibility and necessary support facilities to support a water dependent use by themselves, given the um, the site access, the lot depth and the topographic constraints that are applicable to this particular area. And so that is why um staff is proposing to change the shoreline designation from urban to shoreline residential. Excuse me, which will um change the shoreline residential uh urban designation to shoreline residential, along with updating certain provisions of the SMP to ensure that water dependent and water related uses like um parking and access could continue to be allowed adjacent to the existing overwater structures. And so we think this approach will balance the two neighboring issues or the two neighboring uses with light manufacturing, waterward of the ordinary high water, and then residential uh residential neighborhood landward by bringing consistency to the land use and shoreline designations and predictability to neighboring adjoining neighborhoods while not precluding uses that are supportive to water dependent and water related uh use, continued use of these overwater structures. So I think it's kind of a, a compromise approach that, that balances the different issues at play.
Well, if you ever, and, and this, I don't want to speak out of turn, but once you make the change to shoreline residential, it's very unlikely you ever can go back if you wanted to. That would be a bigger fight to go back to urban if things changed. So unless there's any, if there's not any specific plans for that particular area right now, why would we change it on the residential side?
The, the reason is, is consistency between the uh zoning, the comprehensive plan designation for the area is residential as well as the zoning designation to, so under the SMA, we do need to have consistency between the different designations. Um. It is possible that that consistency could be provided by, you know, leaving the, the environment designation urban and rezoning the land to a uh light manufacturing uh designation.
Right.
But at this point, you know, the, the concern that was brought up um seems to be, you know, wanting to make sure that those existing overwater structures can continue to um be utilized for a water dependent and water related uses. We think it's probably unlikely, given the, the site constraints at the bottom, the toe of the slope um between the toe of the slope and the ordinary high water that you're going to be able to get a water dependent or water related structure developed within that area. Um, however, if the shoreline designation is changed to shoreline residential, you can still do some of those uh supportive uses like parking and access that can help you maintain the continued use of the water dependent or, excuse me, of the overwater structures. Should I continue or are there additional questions or feedback?
Uh, just, I, I've got a question. Is there any chance that uh Army Corps of Engineers or any state or federal agencies would allow anything else to be built over the water there? In addition to what's already there?
Um. Well, DNR, Department of Natural Resources manages it, and I know that they do have uh mandates for what types of allowed uses can take place on state-owned aquatic lands. And they are very focused on um ensuring that the uh public has continued access to shorelines and aquatic areas um and also facilitating economic use of shoreline areas. Um, as far as rebuilding the structures, uh, Don, are you on the call and would you be able to help me with that question?
I am on the call, yes.
And actually, hey, Don, again, Frank Juretsky, but uh it, it, I, I would, I guess my question was more in line, would anything additional ever be allowed to be built along in that area? Some of the structures like the one we're looking at in this picture uh aren't too far from falling down. Um, but uh would anything additional be allowed to be built if those buildings, you know, were preserved and were used? But is there any chance that there'd be more industrial use, marine oriented industrial use along our waterfront?
Along this particular area, in my opinion, it's unlikely. Um, and as, as the commissioners though, have to go through a very extensive process um as well as meeting the city shoreline master program, meeting all the requirements of Department of Natural Resources because that inner harbor line is somewhere uh about middle of that first building from the bank. And, and Libby just brought that map up and you can see where that harbor line is there. So that means they would need to negotiate with DNR for possible lease. And uh, that does take some time, but could happen. Uh, I mean, all things are possible depending on meeting the requirements uh from the Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife. Um, and uh, and NIMs as well, National Fish and Wildlife. So it just, it could just take time. Our current uh shoreline's master program talks about new overwater structures and how that would work under DR uh DR five point six point one. And it talks about, of course, you have to be water dependent uses and so forth. And so we'd have to go through an analysis on that. And we'll certainly take a closer look at it so we can provide you with a better answer, Frank.
Thank you. Thank you. Libby, it's been a long day. I apologize. And unfortunately, you can't see my laser pointer, but, but the area that we're specifically talking about changing from shoreline urban to shoreline residential is that yellow area that you pointed at that's over that grass area, correct? I was looking at the, the three, the three, the two photos that you had, the previous slide. Yeah, so the slide on the right.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about, we're talking about an, an area that's over land, not necessarily over water, correct?
That's correct. It's all over land.
All right. And we keep talking about the area, if we change the zoning from urban to residential, that we would still be able to have supporting like things there like parking and access. But my interest is more, if we change it to residential, what is the likelihood of a apartment or a condominium or some other type of a development, residential development being um permitted for this particular area?
Not very likely. Um, a, a residential, well, a multifamily use would not be permitted. A single family um residential use could potentially occur, but that's the same as under the current shoreline environment designation, a residential single family residence could be constructed. The required um setback from the ordinary high watermark for non-water dependent uses is sixty feet. So it, it's very likely you wouldn't be able to meet that and probably be looking at a shoreline variance request to be able to fit something on those properties.
Okay, so, so really staff's recommendation is based on the fact that, hey, let's, let's, you know, in compliance with the comprehensive plan or the zoning that we've done previous and to be consistent with other zoning around this particular area, go ahead and make the change because nothing really changes. We just changed the designation. Is that a, is that correct?
That's correct. We changed the designation. Um, currently because of the conflict between the two, the zoning and the shoreline environment designation, you would have to comply with both of them. So you could not construct any uh water dependent or wat- water related uses on that landward side.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or should I move on?
Uh, can we hold this one and come back to it at some future time for a little more detailed discussion? I, I'm not, I, I, I guess I'm just feeling a little light on information here about what is the, what is the benefit of making this change versus the potential cost? And I, I think Mr. Graff summarized my, my questions pretty well.
Well, I think the, the benefit is um the consistency between the underlying zoning and the shoreline environment designation, which will provide some certainty for adjoining neighborhoods on, on what can actually be developed within this small area. Um. That's the benefit. Um, the, as far as what could be, what could occur along the, the it's, it's unlikely that any sort of water dependent or water related development could fit within that narrow shoreline area.
So they, so the uses to which it is supposed to be put won't function because of the constraints on the property? And creating a, creating this into a potentially residential area is better use of the land? Is, is that what you're saying? Why is DNR objecting to it then?
My understanding of DNR's comments is that they want to make sure that the continued water-related and water uh dependent use of the piers and the harbor area that they manage can continue. So, so they're wanting to ensure that whatever changes are made are not going to preclude that continued use of those piers.
Meaning the landward side being available for support and infrastructure to support the, the waterward side.
Correct. And with the approach that's proposed, that still would be the, the case. Whereas uh development of some potentially parking or access that could support uh those uses could occur.
Is there precedence for the city to go against a DNR recommendation like this or a DNR request or, or however you want to categorize that?
I'm not aware of any. Don might be aware.
Um, you know, I'm not aware of any precedence. Um, keeping in mind that, you know, DNR manages that area between the inner harbor and outer harbor. Um, but, you know, Libby characterized this area very well. First of all, the, the real issue is the incompatibility between the urban shoreline environment designation and the residential zoning adjacent to it. When you look at the original uh shoreline environment designation of urban, there are so many uses that would be incompatible with a residential zone. And in that narrow area, it becomes very difficult to, you know, provide the necessary parking and so forth. So the existing overwater structures that are there and, you know, using various access roads, and we can use the Sebastian Stewart Cannery as an example. You know, it has uh the access road. There's not very much room between the toe of the bank and the ordinary high watermark. And so it's, it's really um more of a matter of, again, the incompatibility of someone wanting to try to build something there and disrupting a neighborhood with that, that uh potential of a marine oriented use and the noise that goes along with it, potential dust and odors. So that's part of it. The, and then by changing it to shoreline's residential and allowing the accessory uses that continue to allow for some parking and other things, I think is, is, is a very good compromise. And I, I'm, you know, we can, we'll probably certainly hear from uh DNR at some point, but it does allow for the continued use of those cannibals that exist.
Any other comments from commissioners? Shall we leave this one open for future discussion as needed?
Certainly, we can do that. Um, and I will just note that uh the Department of Ecology, when we, when we provide this submittal, I'm so sorry, when we provide this uh submittal to Ecology for their initial determination, they will be looking at all of the comments, uh, the city's responses and, and looking at the um criteria and the WAC for um you know, determining what uses are allowed where and for resolving different landy or different conflicts and use along the shorelines. So um they will also be providing their, their feedback to the city on this issue. And so we can certainly uh, once that's occurred, come back with that additional information.
I know that I'm still feeling a kind of ignorant about the, the details here, so something written would be helpful, some kind of analysis that describes the change would help me a lot, I think.
So the, the watershed company did provide a white paper about this particular issue, which you may have seen.
I don't recall, but I probably saw it.
Yes, um, I'd be happy to send that out again if that would be uh helpful, uh provide some additional um detail that, that I might not have my, have on hand right now.
Commissioners, is that all right? Get a revisit that one? Okay. Thank you.
Let's make a note of that. Children. Okay, we'll move on. Um. So kind of the next hot topic that we, we saw re- reoccur over and over again in the comments um was folks that are concerned about the potential impacts to shoreline and other critical area resources um that could result from potential future extension of a, of a trail along the shoreline. And the staff's response to that is that really the, the shoreline master program, the, the proposed changes and proposed amendments are neither in support or reject any project-specific actions such as the construction of a trail. Um, this, the SMP is a policy, policy and regulatory document and um changes that are proposed, excuse me, are non-project related. So they're not specific to any particular project that may be proposed in the future. And with that, I would just add that um all the, all development uh when it does go through a project level review um is required to demonstrate mitigation sequencing and uh that they are um causing the minimum necessary impact. And they also have to meet compensatory mitigation requirements um and demonstrate no net loss of shoreline ecological functions. So that's that, that comment came up again and again, and there's, there's really no change to be made to the, to the draft other than just clarifying that this, these particular amendments that are being proposed are not aimed at any particular project. amendments that are being proposed are not aimed at any particular project. And kind of the last major comment topic that we saw come up a couple of times was just concerns from members of the public about monitoring and enforcement for conformance with the shoreline master program and approved permit conditions. And as a response to that, we just note that the Planning, Community and Economic Development Department is tasked with enforcement of the shoreline master program and other codes and environmental standards, and that the department does have professional staff that have credentials for and experience in biological assessment and environmental compliance, so that's something that the, the city staff is involved with, obviously. And also, just as a response to the concerns about loss of shoreline vegetation, it was presented to you previously about the proposed amendments that will strengthen vegetation conservation standards, including requiring that pruning for view preservation come into the city through an application, a shoreline exemption application, so that city staff have an opportunity to, to review those proposals for conformance with standards, so we think that's going to help. And also, education is, is, I think we see that as an important aspect, making sure that property owners are aware of the requirements for vegetation conservation. And so with the adoption of the proposed amendments by Ecology, our department is looking at kicking off kind of an education campaign aimed at property owners that have, that own property in shoreline jurisdiction within the city. We're looking at sending out postcards that will provide information about the recent updates to the code, the amendments to the SMP, and also some educational material links about shoreline resources, and that, we think that that'll be one, one step that we can take to, to help folks take better care of the shoreline. So those were the four primary comment areas, if you've gone through the public comments, and I think really the responses address the majority of the public comments that were received. So with that, I'd like to just talk about what happens next with the process. If the Planning Commission would like, I also have the comment matrix available that I can pull up if you have specific, other specific comments that you would like to discuss.
Libby, I, I just want, I just wanted to ask you one question. Given all the comments that came in, as you said, on the monitoring of the mitigation activities on a project or the compliance with codes, is there any way, and you indicated that the staff routinely performs those activities, is there any way that we can make available to interested parties just copies of the reports of what they've accomplished on the various projects to kind of make people comfortable that there's an actual work has been done, reports have been prepared, activity is being, is continuing to proceed in accordance with the projects as initially approved?
Um, you know, I think that we have more and more capability to provide information online, and so that, that is a good thing. As far as, you know, mitigation and monitoring reports, that is something that we do require as part of a project that has impacts, and that is probably something that we could add into the project file that's available on Laserfish through the public portal. So yeah, so that's probably something that we could look at doing.
I was just wondering how to assage the concerns of a lot of the people in their comments talked about that they didn't see any visibility of that, and maybe they're not aware of it, or what have you.
Sure, and Don may want to talk a little bit about our, our process for code enforcement, tracking, and the reports that are available through that.
Oh, thank you, Louis. Yeah, you know, we, we keep fairly good records in, in regards to our code enforcement activities. I think, you know, for the most part, having the documents available online as miscreants and will benefit the community of being able to see all the required reports and, and how those work together with our staff and/or consultant monitoring requirements. You know, a, a good example might be a, a project that takes place along the shoreline, it might be a private project, and maybe they're doing a private doc, they have submitted the appropriate habitat analysis to, to the city, drawings, they've also gone through the Washington State Department of Wildlife, WDFW, Core, and, and others, and so we do an, an inspection and, and check it out. If there are, if there is mitigation required such as planting, we confirm with our biologist and with the contractors, consultants as well, that the plants are back the species that were required and implanted by number as required, and then those reports are typically in the file. And if they don't meet those requirements, then we don't, we don't sign off on it. We're now, as Libby mentioned, fortunate enough to have a qualified professional on our staff who knows a whole lot more about the environmental issues and plantings along the shoreline than we have had in the past, and she's very capable of helping us determine all that, so. So, and once, you know, once we determine that in fact, maybe through monitoring, that the mitigation that was required, if it isn't working, then we notify the applicants that they need to come back, figure out what needs to be done for additional planting, or how it can achieve the no net loss required along the shoreline. I hope that was helpful.
Thank you, Don. Moving on, so what happens next? City staff and the watershed company will be looking at updating the current draft of the shoreline master program amendments with the very minor updates that were suggested in, in a lot of the public comments, there were a lot of grammar and, you know, suggested revisions for clarity, so we'll be making those updates and then putting together the, the information in a submittal package for the Department of Ecology, so the public comments and all of the public comments and, excuse me, the responses, along with the draft. The Department of Ecology has a month to review the submittal and make a determination of concurrence as to whether the proposed amendments are consistent with the Shoreline Management Act and the guidelines for amendments. And then, once we're notified of Ecology's determination, if they determine that the proposal is, is consistent with the requirements, the watershed company is going to put the shoreline master program into the codified format, so we've been talking about moving the shoreline master program development regulations into Title 19, so that all of those regulatory requirements are in one location and not in separate documents. And so the next time you see the SMP amendments, they will be in that format, so numbering will change, and the policies and goals will be removed and just the development regulations remaining. So Planning Commission will have the opportunity to review that document, and, and that is what you would, we would expect you to base your recommendation to the city council on. So once the city council has your recommendation and the, the proposed amendments, they, they will review that, they could decide to have an additional public hearing, and then ultimately they will adopt some form of the proposed amendments, and after that, the package gets sent to the Department of Ecology, who has the final review authority over the amendment process, so they will do their final review and take their final action by approving the SMP, and then it will become effective, I think it's two weeks after that. So quite a few steps to go still, are there any questions about that, that upcoming process? Where, where Planning Commission fits into that?
I had one question about the document that we will be looking at after the Ecology's finished with it. Will it show the strike-throughs and changes?
Yes, it will continue to show the strike-throughs and changes, and we will also make sure to identify any of the, the changes that are resulting from the public comments separately, so you'll be able to see all of that.
That would, that's been very helpful to do that, it's made it a lot easier for us to track the changes.
Understand.
Anything more, Ms. Grage?
That, that's the extent of what I had prepared, I'm happy to talk, try to answer additional questions or talk about anything else the commission would like to discuss or provide feedback on.
Hearing no questions or issues, let me just check in with the commissioners, any last comments or, or things you bring up, want to bring up before we close out the meeting?
Thank you all.
Appreciate everybody joining the meeting for tonight, and I'm sure looking forward to meeting in person.
Oh, yes.
So with that, we will close tonight's meeting and see you in a couple of weeks.
Again, thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.